Okay, Son, thank you so much. I'm gonna gamble in this meeting. And call to order. So it is August 11th, 2021, the special meeting of the Select Committee on Homelessness Strategies Investments will come to order. It is 2:01 PM. I'm Andrew Lewis, Chair of the Select Committee on Homelessness Strategies and Investments. I do want to note at the top, Councilmembers Juarez and Sawant have prior engagements and are excused from the special meeting. Will the committee clerk please call the roll noting those excused absences?
Council President Gonzalez.
President.
Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Moscata.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Chair, there are five members present.
Thank you. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Chairs report. I'm gonna make, well, here I am, I'll give it just a brief overview. I'm gonna have some comments after public comment to queue up the discussion. I do first want to note Councilmember Peterson has joined the meeting and for that to be reflected into the record. Today, we're gonna be hearing from a panel and Councilmember Herbold has also just joined the meeting. So let the record reflect those those new councilmembers in attendance. I do just want to give a brief overview of where we're gonna kind of go here with this meeting. After our meeting at the end of July, there were some comments about the rate at which we're standing up emergency shelter investments that this council has fully funded in the 2021 budget. One of the hurdles that is regularly mentioned from our partners in the executive branch is provider capacity as a limiting factor in how we can stand up and deploy emergency shelter and housing assets. I felt that it warranted a special emergency meeting, and I want to give my thanks at the front of this to Council President Gonzalez for carving out the space for this meeting to really have a conversation before we depart on recess, so as to maximize my time during recess to to run some of this down in anticipation of our budget discussions in the fall to see how we can really get ahead of and address some of the capacity issues for some of these shelter options. This is frequently a conversation I have with members of the community who are regularly very helpful in queuing up ideas around potential forms of shelter, you know, things like, you know, tiny house villages or Quonset huts, or, you know, someone yesterday talked about maybe a decommissioned cruise ship. I think one thing that gets lost in these conversations is that the shelter assets have to be staffed, they have to be supported, and that means we have to have capacity from providers to operate the shelter once it has stood up. So that is all we're talking about today. It should be a great discussion and inform some of our policy choices as we go into the fall to really expand our work to meet the scale of the challenge that we face. So with that, I'll have a few more options, a few more comments to queue up the discussion after public comment, but with that, I will turn to the public comment. I will moderate the public comment period in the following manner. Public comment period for this meeting is 20 minutes. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I will call each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone and an automatic prompt if you've been unmuted will be the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak, and then the speaker must press star six to begin speaking. Just a reminder, you'll hear a chime when 10 seconds are left, and once you hear that chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comment. Once you've completed your public comment, please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, please do so via the Seattle channel or the listening options that are listed on the agenda. The comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. My understanding is our first speaker is Teresa Barker. So Teresa, if you are out there, do please press star six. And when you hear the prompt if you've been unmuted, feel free to begin your two-minute testimony.
Good afternoon. This is Teresa Barker. I've met many of you, and as you know, I'm in a community of 200 neighbors around Ravenna Park who've been working on homelessness for the last four years. When I saw this topic, agenda topic today, I just wanted to give a couple of quick comments. So we know that those living, what we learned in the last four years, that those living outdoors need assistance and protection. Last week, we met with lead providers to learn more about their work, especially with the Just Care model, which we're very excited about because of the effectiveness and the client-first model. We have advocated for the Just Care model last, last, I gave public comment last, at the last meeting of this committee, especially the voluntary relocation aspect and the culturally sensitive support that's done for those in need. The lead staff, when we spoke with them, have made it really clear that their capacity, the program seems very, very effective, very high rate of people accepting services of whatever they need from documents and on forward, but the capacity is critically limited. They actually couldn't take on more than they what they're currently contracted for. So I'm, I'm just giving public comment today to say we need more support for this model, and our community is more than willing to help. We actually have a Ravenna pop-up kitchen that's been operating just among neighbors. On a voluntary basis, it has a weekly meal on Sundays to anybody who walks up at 65th Park and Ride. They've been doing this for two and a half years. They also provide supplies that are donated, like towels and so on, and they've been working during shutdown on donations from restaurants. We don't want to, you know, go out and do this ourselves, but we have done it, and we just need leadership support from the city for these, to expand these provider capacity for effective and meaningful support for those in need. And with that, I'll pass. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Um, Sang, do we have any other public commenter signed up to speak?
There are no other public comment registrants.
Thank you, Sang and Son. And with that, I will end the public comment period. Moving on to items of business, we have one item of business today. So, Mr. Clerk, will you please read item one into the record?
Panel discussion on building capacity and workforce stabilization among city contracted homelessness services providers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I am gonna give, as I said earlier, a little bit of a, of a queue-up statement on this. And then I'm gonna introduce the panelists who we have here with us today from several of our, our premier local providers of services. But I do just want to do a little bit of table setting, as I indicated I would before the public comment. I want to acknowledge at the front of this meeting that we are nearly six years into declared state of emergency on homelessness. This state of emergency is clear and apparent, and by far the biggest challenge that the city is facing. And I say that knowing that we are currently facing an unprecedented global pandemic that is resurgent under the Delta variant. I believe that homelessness is a bigger state of emergency facing our community even than our current struggles that we're facing with COVID. And we know that while the crisis is multifaceted, and that every one of our neighbors experiencing homelessness has a different lived experience, we have seen this crisis manifest most visibly in a significant number of our neighbors experiencing homelessness who are utilizing an unsanctioned encampment as their primary form of shelter. I don't want to imply that the unsanctioned encampments are our only policy challenge stemming from tackling the multifaceted issue of homelessness. I don't want to imply that once the unsanctioned encampment problem is solved for, that homelessness by extension will be solved for. We know it won't. But I do want to highlight that the unsanctioned encampments currently are presenting the most exigent challenge that the city is facing in a policy area that has many pressing challenges. And we know that the problem with addressing the unsanctioned encampments isn't outreach. We've seen very compelling evidence that the Just Care model that was discussed in public comment and that we have seen covered in the news on a regular basis that centers the autonomy of our neighbors experiencing homelessness, that centers their needs and in so doing centers the needs of the surrounding community, that centers an approach that, that really respects the autonomy of individuals to accept an offer of something better and meeting people where they are. We have seen multiple examples through Just Care's outreach model over the course of this pandemic that proves it is an effective way to give people an offer to go somewhere better and in so doing, remove the necessity of people to live in unsanctioned encampments. So we know outreach isn't the problem, and there's a way to structure outreach to resolve the encampment problem. We know the problem isn't the attractiveness of our enhanced shelter options. We know that people like the hotels with supportive services that are operated by Just Care and the Low Income Housing Institute. We know that people like the tiny houses that are operated by the Low Income Housing Institute and Catholic Community Services in our broader community. We know that people like the navigation center placements that have been de-intensified during the pandemic and that have given people the supportive help and assistance that they need. We know that the fundamental problem is a volume of those placements, and that any way that we dress this issue up in terms of tinkering with our outreach, increasing the pass-through from the shelter to go ultimately to permanent supportive housing, which we know is the way that we are going to ultimately solve for homelessness is by expanding permanent supportive housing. We know that expanding market rate housing opportunities through density reforms and expanding housing choice in more neighborhoods down the road is going to solve for homelessness. But we really need to have this tactical discussion right now as a city family about the situation of giving our neighbors experiencing homelessness a choice to live somewhere that isn't a non-sanctioned encampment, because we know from our outreach choices and we know from the, the type of shelter we have been able to set up that people want to take those shelter options, they will take those shelter options, and it will center their well-being, the well-being of our small businesses, the well-being of our housed neighbors, unsheltered neighbors, everybody by increasing the volume of these placements. We heard at the end of our meeting in July that the council has funded 2,250 additional enhanced shelter placements fully for 2021, about 1,650 of those placements in our budget that we approved last November for 2021, and several hundred additional placements in our supplemental American Recovery Act pass package. We know that those 2,250 spaces when fully stood up are gonna make a massive visible impact, and in some cases are gonna mean the difference between life and death for some of our neighbors experiencing homelessness who are currently living in a very precarious state with nowhere else to go but unsanctioned encampments. It has never been the policy of this council, and it will never be the policy of this council, to have a policy that condones or expects unsanctioned encampments to be a significant portion of the shelter portfolio of the city of Seattle. That is not what this council through its budgets and its rhetoric has advocated for. This council has advocated for standing up desirable enhanced shelter that we know people will accept, and housing and zoning policies that we know in the long term are gonna give everyone a place to live in our community. So with that, I want to pivot to our panel, because we, we should have a conversation about how we can develop capacity and resource to staff 2,250 fully funded enhanced shelter spaces for 2021, knowing that more investment is likely on the way and that more investment is going to need to be stood up in 2022 to respond to the scale of our crisis. And I would like to introduce each person individually, and then after I introduce the panel, turn it over to folks one by one to give some opening remarks and then have a conversation with council colleagues to delve into some of these topics. So I want to start just by going through everyone who has joined us today. We have Derek Bellegarde from the Chief Seattle Club. Hello, Derek. Welcome. We have Bill Hallerman from Catholic Community Services. Welcome, Bill. We have, sorry, I'm just trying to look through this list on my Zoom here. Teresa Homan. Teresa, welcome to the committee. We have Lauren Fay from Downtown Emergency Service Center, and we have DeGal Cooper present with us. Did I miss anybody? Can someone just flag if I missed a panelist? You can unmute and yell at me if I missed you.
This is Maya with the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle.
Maya, thank you so much, and thank you for coming. Okay, why don't we jump into this? Derek, since I introduced you first, why don't you go ahead and kick us off? And then if you wouldn't mind, Derek, sort of passing it off popcorn style, if after your introduction, initial remarks, if you wouldn't mind passing it to another one of your fellow providers here until we have gone through the whole panel, and then we can open it up for, for questions and further comments. So Derek, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Yeah, Derek Bellegarde, Executive Director, Chief Seattle Club. Glad to be here. Thank you all for allowing the space. Yeah, I'm really excited about this conversation. I am really thrilled about the, talking about the, the enhanced shelter idea and also with Just Care, as you know, we, Chief Seattle Club partnered with Just Care, and we, you know, for a little while there, we had Wolford Inn. It really worked very well, but I will say though, that, that, that type of program and outreach wouldn't have done well with the native community with the PDA not actually intentionally coming out and partnering with the Chief Seattle Club. If that hadn't happened, it probably wouldn't have worked very well at all for the native community. So we'll put a plug out there that there has to be a culturally appropriate focus within that and within that model. We're really excited about some of the potentials of, of future shelters. We do know that that's obviously not a solution that we do, but we do need shelters. Right now, we have Kings Inn with through the city. It's, we have some issues with it. It's, it's more than just a shelter. It's come with a rapid rehousing focus, which is actually causing some problems actually trying to get people housed that aren't, you know, that have very high needs, rapid rehousing, technically really into program, program for that type of thing. But what we really need is a shelter to actually do some deep intensive trauma, trauma work with our relatives to get them into that next stage, to get them into that permanent supportive housing, permanent solution without that pressure of just trying to get people rapidly rehoused, because it ain't really working. The concept's just not very well thought out. But that's the one problem. But the shelter itself, we filled it with, you know, 69 natives in a matter of days. No shelter's ever been able to do that, having they have any native representation, but we do it. We could fill another Kings Inn the same size, probably with the same amount of natives tomorrow. But so the shelter idea really is working and helped to get our people off the streets, but we need to be able to do some trauma work with them. So I think some sort of healing component with that also. Staff retention, I'm sure everybody's gonna talk about today, you know, that's doing this work. We need to get more competitive pay, pay increases, pay our staff well enough to actually stay in the field. It's very hard work, especially, you know, social work has got us through this pandemic, and it doesn't seem like it's very valued as, as a society. We need to actually start increasing that and pay people their value and their worth and what they contribute to our society. And so social workers need to get paid and to actually retain them and keep quality workers. We need to actually invest more into that. Beyond just expanding the capacity and more employees, we need to be able to actually pay everybody what they're truly worth in this society. So yeah, I guess I'll just wait, pass it on. I don't want to take up too much time. Bill Hallerman, I see your name on here.
Thanks, Derek. So I'm Bill Hallerman with Catholic Community Services. I want to just echo a couple of things that Derek shared. So I've been doing this work 26 years here, and I think it's the hardest time that I've seen in terms of retaining and hiring staff to do this work. I want to, and a piece of that is the context where we are. For those folks that have been providing services in the last 16 months of the pandemic, in addition to walking through that with, with so many folks, a number of us converted nighttime-only shelters in churches to 24/7 low-barrier enhanced shelter, which is the right thing to do, because it enables us to work with folks in a really focused way. Doing that has meant adding a whole bunch of staff just to make that transition. So a number of us providers here have done that, have added capacity over the last 16 to 17 months, even though it's been difficult to hire folks to do that. I would echo what Derek said. We have to do something about salary for the folks that are doing this work. For the folks that are, our line staff at our shelters start at like $18 an hour, our case managers at $21 an hour. And that's not because we don't want to pay them more. That's because the contracts that we have with government and the dollars we're able to raise, that's all we can afford to pay them. And that's, that's really sinful, I would say. So there's no way to address the capacity when, when you and other government folks come and say, can you do this? Could you guys expand? Can you do more? Can you do more? My biggest fear is I won't be able to hire people to follow through on that. So I think that's the biggest challenge that's in front of us. I'm glad we've moved to low-barrier 24/7 shelter. It is necessary, and we're getting better outcomes with folks for it. The only hope, the, one hopeful thing I'd share before I pass it would be, we're, we're doing a whole lot, and other providers are too, on hiring folks with lived experience more and more in our, our shelters and housing. And what we're, we're drawing from people that have stabilized in housing that a few years ago, you know, might have been in the shelter system but have gotten stable with the focus of housing that we've all had on permanent housing with so many of the folks coming through the system, many of them stabilized, and we're hiring more and more of those folks. In fact, we have a, we have a program that kind of does a special training with folks who've previously been homeless in order to get them into the workforce in a, in a good way, and those folks are, are, they have a special gift, I think, and a, a special a special way of approaching the work that's really wonderful and really good. So that is, that's a hopeful thing. We need to do more to support those folks in their stability and their continuing to work for us and taking more and more of that leadership with us, but we've got to pay them a just wage in the meantime. Okay, so I would say I pass it to Lauren Fay from DESC.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Bill, and thank you, everyone, for the invitation to speak today. My name is Lauren Fay. I'm the Senior Business Manager at DESC, where I've worked for the past 13 years in a variety of roles. As many of you probably know, DESC started off as an emergency shelter, but we do a lot, lot more than that today. And we do enhanced shelter, build and operate permanent supportive housing. We're a licensed behavioral healthcare provider. We do mobile crisis work and so on. You know, and we really specialize in serving folks who have a long-term experiences of homelessness in our community and who are living with severe substance use disorders, co-occurring disorders, polysubstance use, mental health issues, and just other pervasive disabling conditions. Right now, so we have a wide range of jobs at DESC with all of that that I've just mentioned that we do, starting from a shelter and now with all these different programs and locations, we currently have 839 different jobs at DESC, full-time employees at DESC. And we have well over 100 vacant positions right now, well over, I'd say closer to 150. I've been involved in staffing work and workforce issues for a long time at DESC, and I'm not exaggerating when I say this is, this is the most challenging time that we've experienced. You know, it's definitely echoing what Bill was just mentioning with all of his years of experience as well. You know, of course, there have been other blips in the labor market before, but this time in particular, it is so difficult to recruit and retain and retain our staff, and I really think this has been compounded by the new stressors of doing this work during a pandemic. Our clients are struggling more than we have seen before, and our staff are struggling more in their personal lives than we have seen before. You know, I think as you, as you start thinking about the 2022 budget process, there's a few key things that I think will be important to keep in mind. One is to help all of us providers keep pace with the rate of inflation. Right now, CPIW is tracking at 6.3%. And so for us to maintain even some of the ground that we have over the past few years to try to get our, our wages even close to market median, which we are not at uniformly across the board yet, we would need a, a COLA of 6.3% for, for our staff so that they have, you know, that purchasing power here in our community. Another thing to consider is, you know, we are going to, I think, continue to struggle getting out of this hole that we are in with recruitment and retention because we, we can't compete with a work market where there's such broad choice in the community right now. People are seeing the opportunity to try out a variety of jobs and, and we in particular just can't compete with the wages that similar work are able, similar positions are able to pay in other kind of public sector settings. So for example, one real quick example would be like para-professionals for the Seattle School District on average, you know, start at a midpoint of around $24 an hour, where our staffing equivalent is about $19 an hour. And so those kinds of disparities and knowing how many open positions there are in our community really means that we can't compete. If you are qualified for both, which in many of these cases, the, the folks that we're seeing are, they're going to opt for the, the higher pay, obviously. In addition to this, we also need to be thinking about how our landscape in human services and social services has changed due to the pandemic. We need to kind of rethink how we are providing our services moving into what will hopefully be a post-pandemic state at some point in the near future. But we, what we're seeing is the trauma that has been caused by this pandemic, you know, piling on top of all the other traumas that the folks that we're serving already experienced, being disproportionately marginalized, oppressed, you know, having serious issues with income inequality and so on. Now, adding in these stressors of COVID, similar to what Bill was saying, we really have seen it be to be crucial for there to be folks with lived experience in our workforce. So thinking about how we can get new, new kinds of positions funded that really can kind of bridge that, those gaps of our traditional positions. You know, overall, I would just say COVID, it's, it's having lasting impacts. Morale is really low, unfortunately, and our workers are being significantly impacted by this. Yeah, just thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this. I'm really eager to work with you all further if given the opportunity. We have, we have a lot of work to do. Thank you so much. Oh, and I'll pass it over to, I'm so sorry. Let's see here. Who are our options? Oh.
So Sharon has.
Sharon. Yeah, Sharon, go for it.
Well, thanks. Thanks so much. I'm Sharon Lee, Executive Director, Lehigh Low Income Housing Institute. I also have Teresa Homan from me, with me, I'm here, and I wanted to talk about capacity. So right now, we operate eight tiny house villages in Seattle, and we operate the Executive Pacific Hotel and Lakefront, and then we also operate other tiny house villages in Olympia, Tacoma, and we're opening up one in Bellingham. And so we, in the Seattle area, and also we have one in Skyway, a tiny house village. So we're housing 800, over 800 homeless men, women, children, people with pets, veterans, seniors in our, what's called enhanced 24/7 enhanced shelters. And we have been eagerly, eagerly awaiting opening three more villages. I know that the council, I want to thank the council for funding three new villages and then three new villages. And we have not experienced the same level of concern around hiring. Most recently, we have 32 case managers position that are placed in our housing or placed in our tiny house villages, and we only have one vacancy. So we have been able to hire case managers and we offer the case managers and the village organizers, the people who are, you know, around the clock providing assistance and security. They have union wage jobs and union, you know, benefits. And so we have a package. And so we have a package, we believe, like we pay a hundred percent of the healthcare, there's no cost share. We have lots of vacation. So that's not to say that, you know, we couldn't do better, but I'll tell you where we're being squeezed. We're being squeezed because some of the contracts from the Human Services Department are sort of, in some ways, so budget conscious that there's very little money for training, there's very little money for security. And it's, and there's very little money for, you know, behavioral health or, or during the pandemics, you know, we needed extra money for food. As an example, we're trying to open up Rosie's Village in the U District and in Friendship Heights, which is one hundred twenty fifth and Aurora. And we are asking HSD, please give us a second person, a second staff person to be in the evenings, at night, on weekends, right? Because these are, you know, these are neighborhoods that have, you know, seen a lot of drug activity, you know, issues that we need two people awake, right? And so we still have this proposal before the Human Service Department to please give us adequate funding so we can really do a terrific job managing the village and keeping everybody safe and being a good neighbor. So we feel that the capacity issues we have are, are, you know, largely constrained by the contracts that are sort of underfunded, if that makes any sense. I know that the council, and thank you, you, you provided four point six million for three new villages. And all those villages, the three are delayed in terms of being open. So there is actually money for us to staff adequately. So the other thing is, you should know that I think we're like the third largest provider with HSD around some of the, you know, the number of homeless beds. We also have about seven hundred units of permanent supportive housing and homeless housing. So as a housing organization, we can get people from a tiny house into long-term housing because we prioritize them into Lehigh housing. We have housing all over King County, Seattle, we have housing in Snohomish Counties, Olympia. And so we want to focus on, you know, on the ground case managers and then a quickly, as quickly as possible, moving people into our housing, Section Eight housing, other subsized housing. So we have asked the Human Service Department for more case management help. And we've also asked them for access to rapid rehousing and access to emergency housing vouchers. And we're still waiting to hear. But as you know, because of the moratorium on eviction, you know, we can't be like, you know, forced, I mean, everyone's, you know, staying put, right? So there's actually fewer units available for people who are leaving a tiny house or leaving a shelter. But we do want to make sure that there is a quick and extremely supportive pathway into permanent housing. Now during COVID, we did not have to pivot very much because the tiny houses are actually very safe during COVID and even now because people have fresh air. They are not, you know, sharing a hallway, they're not sharing a dorm room. They can close the door, they can open the door and get fresh air. And so Teresa, maybe if you could say a little more about how effective we've been during COVID?
Yes, yeah, definitely. Thank you, Sharon. So we have been extraordinarily mindful about the importance of following all the guidelines and ensuring that the village is sanitized every two hours, that temperatures are taken of every person stepping into the village, that we're, that we're monitoring how much people are social distancing. When we see too many people congregating in the kitchen, we go ask them to take turns and just have two in there at a time. So that has been quite effective. I've been with the Tiny House Village Program now for about two years. I'm the Program Manager of the, of the Tiny House Villages. And I have to say, I was in permanent supportive housing with Plymouth and Catholic Housing for approximately ten years. And I, the, the thing, the reason I'm so sold on the idea of Tiny House Villages is because they seem to me to be the perfect stepping stone to housing, a safe, a safe place to wait it out. I, I would think that we have not measured this, but I'm going to. I, I, I'm, I'm believing that having been a building manager, if you come through a Tiny House Village, you're getting over the three sort of learning curves to be successful in permanent housing. And that would be living again within community, living again within walls, and living again within a system of rules. And as people sort of move through those, those things and get better at them and get more comfortable with them, to then move them into permanent supportive housing, I'm positive that their, that their success rate is higher than those who have just come right off the street into permanent housing. I know that I would have asked fewer people to leave if they had come through Tiny House Villages and had that space to sort of acclimate. I also want to say, you know, a lot of what people are saying rings true. However, I feel like in Lehigh, we have been, we have been lucky slash successful in attracting people. And I'll tell you, our wages aren't that different. So it, it is true that we have very few, just the one case manager position open. Our case managers are extraordinarily competent in what they do in that they are hitting fifty percent moving into permanent housing from our Tiny House Villages. That's for last year. So we had a hundred sixty two people exit, eighty one, that's fifty percent into, into permanent housing, and about ten more into transitional housing. And so, you know, so we, we feel that not only is the Tiny House Village model good in terms of moving people forward into permanent housing, but it does provide immediate, and I mean immediate, we can build them in three weeks, immediate safety, immediate safety from, you know, with a locking door, no more threat of, of somebody coming in, no more threat of rats getting in. Safety in, in terms of a space to grieve and think and heal and move forward and start to dream. Our case managers and we, we, we stretch those training dollars that we're, we're hoping can increase in the future. But we stretch them so that everybody does get, you know, as much training as possible on who it is we are working with. Who is our community that we're serving and helping heal? And how do we best do that? And that's, and that's, you know, there's training on everything, motivational interviewing, de-escalation, hoarding, you know, I mean, there's a whole list, right? There's like eighty nine trainings our teams do. But our constraints are around the funding. And if, and to me, you know, to me, it just feels like if we can, if we can just release some dollars to, to more Tiny House Villages being funded for all, then, then that will, that will solve some of the problems we're having with the, with the community that, that it feels like we're being overrun by people who are unhoused because we are. It is, it is a short-term solution. Nobody thinks this is, you know, the, the way to go permanently. But man, in the short term, I can't, I can't imagine a better setup. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Let's move to Maya next. Maya.
Thank you. Hi. Like I said earlier, I'm with the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. And what I would add that is unique at the Urban League compared to what others have said today is that we do not only help with those who are experiencing homelessness locate housing, but also locate employment. And so I would say that there has been an, an issue finding adequate employment, adequate wages for anyone, I would say, not only for us at the Urban League to have jobs for, for people to work at our shelters or what have you, but also finding jobs for those who are participants in our programs. And so if there was adequate or direct funding for, you know, organizations like the Urban League to be able to provide different, different certifications or different employment programs, very similar to our signature Career Bridge program, I think will be very beneficial because not only do, does the participants in our programs need stable housing, but they need stable employment as well. And so we have been able to have shelters as well as help support those who are currently in hotels. And so having the dual model of not only trying to find them stable housing, but stable employment at the same time, have been very beneficial. Finding housing is the first step, of course, so they can have that stability of being able to have a place to go home each night so they can be able to go to work each day as well as have opportunities to get shower, unwind, and et cetera, like they do in the hotels. But specifically in terms of, in what we have seen, also what everybody has also said we have seen as well, but something that's different would be finding adequate employment for those who are experiencing homelessness in our programs. As well as, as we are expanding our youth and young adult shelter at the Urban League, being able to adequately find youth that need their service because we know that they need their service, being able to have some sort of resource, whether it be, I know that there are some resources in community colleges as well as high schools, but increasing the support for having access for those who need help finding resources to be able to find them if they're in school or within community. So that's the, the two compared to what everyone else was saying, the two things that I would also add in terms of what is needed in terms of supporting our staff with those who are experiencing homelessness. Thank you so much.
Great. So sorry, who hasn't gone yet? I, I think that there's at least one panelist who hasn't presented yet.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name's Degail Cooper. I'm the Chief Program and Impact Officer at Youth Care. I'm also here with my colleague Christopher Hanson, who also is going to be speaking with me today. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Councilmember Lewis. And what I wanted to kind of focus on is provider capacity, especially in regard to youth-serving organizations. And, you know, one of the things that we're always hearing about is what the needs are for the adult homeless population. But there are some very, very specific needs for young people, beginning with ages of eighteen up to twenty five, twenty six, for, for a lot of our programs. And at Youth Care, you know, we try to couple our services not only with providing housing, but also providing, you know, workforce development support for young people as well as focusing on, you know, connecting them to the mental health and substance use resources that they need. And so what we would really be asking for is that more dollars need to be focused on providing adequate skilled and qualified mental health services and substance use services for the young adult population, that organizations like Youth Care have access to those resources and that we are able to make sure that young people are not going unserved in these areas. The other piece that I would like to kind of focus on too is just around, I've heard a lot of people talk about the, the need for staff. You know, I totally appreciate everyone's concern around being able to pay staff adequate wages. But the other part that we need for the young adult population is more qualified staff. Staff who come with not just that experience, but the expertise in serving. And so therefore we need to be able to pay them higher wages in order to meet the needs for young people. Another area that is, I think, critical for young people especially, that we don't often talk about is the cultural issues and housing policies that are in place. And oftentimes, young people who are, you know, not part of the, you know, dominant culture of young people that are out there who have specialized needs, whether they are LGBTQ young people or young people from BIPOC communities, there are some very specific needs that they have. And so, you know, we are trying to focus our hiring processes on hiring staff who better reflect the, the young people that are in our programs and receiving our services. And oftentimes, in order to keep those professionals at agencies like Youth Care, we also need to be able to pay them more, but we also need to be able to attract them to an organization like ours. And the way to do that is, is that we have more opportunities, we have higher wages, but we also have policies and, and practices across our network of serving homeless individuals that, you know, honor the work of BIPOC communities. And, you know, that, that's a cultural piece that maybe does not necessarily require any additional funding from the council, but it does require our attention to this particular kind of need. Christopher, would you like to add other sources or resources that we're looking at?
Thanks, Degail. My internet's a bit shoddy, folks, so my apologies. But actually, to that point, I, I don't think I have too much more to add. I think one of our other colleagues mentioned that, you know, we, we've heard from everyone, the advocacy for increased wages for staff. Our workers have been the folks that have shown up every day throughout this pandemic to keep our unhoused neighbors, adults and youth, and you have adults and families safe throughout the entire pandemic. It's, you know, an ethical mandate for us to pay them a living wage and not just to survive, but to thrive. They're doing lifesaving work. But also our, our, our other costs have, also continue to go up as well. And, and so it's a, we need, we need a holistic look about what is actually sustainable for an increase of a contract year after year, looking at the rate of, of inflation in our, in our area. And then the last thing that I want to underscore is to echo what, what Degail shared around the acknowledgement of systemic racism as a main driving factor in homelessness and that we need real attention and resources. And the, the resources to, that are specifically for bringing agencies and community and people who are experiencing homelessness and racism to, for like real healing solutions. And that's work that other smaller community-based organizations are, are already doing. It's work that, you know, other agencies on this call are doing, but we're doing it under-resourced. So we need that to be something that is, that is looked at when, when we're advocating for dollars.
Thank you so much, guys, and, and very, very much appreciate all of the comments here to queue up this conversation from this, this distinguished panel that we've assembled. I, I want to go and back and ask a few just quick clarifying things, and then I want to open it up to my colleagues on the committee. Lauren, going back to something you said that I want to drill into just a little bit of a lot of the current posted vacancies that DESC has, is there a particular theme to those vacancies? Are there particular competencies that DESC is having a hard time filling? Or is it a little all over the place? I'm just kind of curious to hear about that, that vacancy issue and, and if there's a particular subject area that's particularly hard to fill right now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. The, it is a little bit all over the board, but I can say that in particular, we are struggling with our master's level positions that require like mental health professionals, social work type degrees. Those ones we are really struggling to, to recruit and retain for. And I believe, I have the numbers here real quick. I believe right now what we're looking at is a, is a discrepancy in pay of about thirty nine percent of what, so what we can offer. about thirty-nine percent of what, so what we can offer is we would need about a thirty-nine percent increase to our wages for those positions to be on par with similar positions at, you know, at the county, at other public sector settings, hospitals and so on. But in general, the, it is a vast array of positions, entry level managerial. A lot of them though do require experience in the, in behavioral health type field or some experience working with our population. And so we are seeing also issues there with the pipeline of folks who have even just a small amount of experience of human service work.
Great. Thank you for providing that clarification. I have a couple of additional questions, but I want to open it up to my colleagues here if there are things that folks want to ask to kind of get the conversation going. Councilmember Muscata?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the entire panel here today with us. I know that what you have raised today is not new. In fact, many of us on council had the opportunity to stand with you and to demand a cost of living increase that had been for ten years not allocated by the city's departments. And when we passed the cost of living increase, we were scolded, we were slapped on the hand, we were patted on the head, we were told that it wasn't necessary. And your voice and your experience and your repeated calls for equity, especially in this area prevailed. And they prevailed because of council. They prevailed because council heard finally the opportunity to advance at least giving a cost of living increase out there. And I think that what you're raising is the underbelly of the issue that's been long pervasive, which is the historic underpayment in this sector. But I raise that to note how important it's been for you to be on the front lines providing this work and I assume how demoralizing it must have been to even be asking for a cost of living increase and to have been told via the accusations passed on to council on us for even just trying to give you a cost of living increase, which at the time would have been still allowing for seven new police officers to go to the navigation team. And instead of nine new, we were suggesting seven new so that there could at least be that cost of living increase. I'm really proud that the council at the time passed that cost of living increase. I know how important it was more symbolically for some of the members. And I think that there's unified interests, especially because of this hearing and all that we've been working on together to address the underpayment. I think one of the things that I'd love to know a little bit more about is sort of where that bottleneck occurs because as we heard in Councilmember Lewis's committee meeting last time, this council over the last twelve months or so, both through federal ARPA dollars, through the last budget, through the effort that Councilmember Lewis and others had been championing earlier this year, we as the council have allocated about forty-five million dollars directly into addressing the issues of homelessness services and creating additional shelters. So my first question, and I'll have another one, Councilmember Lewis. My first question is really of that forty-five million dollars, and perhaps central staff, you can help us with this answer, is do we have any sense of whether or not all of that money has been allocated? Has that been given to the very entities who we are asking to help respond to this crisis? And now we are being told what the council has known for a long time, which is that those contracts are woefully inadequate to serve the high needs population. So the first question is, do we know of the forty-five million that the council has allocated? How much of that forty-five million is still sitting unspent in the department?
Chair, I can answer that or take a swing at that. We know that, so that's difficult to break down because in some cases, for example, Ms. Lee from Lehigh can speak to how there are some beds that are not yet operational for tiny home villages. Though one of those villages, as of this week, in action taken by the council, will begin moving towards that and really actually opening up beds soon. That doesn't mean that funds haven't necessarily been provided. So there have been, I believe, they might have been encumbered and not yet expended, or they may have been spent to some degree, but not fully. They might be in the process. But we do know that only two hundred and eighty of the six hundred and seventy-five shelter beds, whether that's tiny homes or a shelter or a hotel, have actually come online and started accepting people that are, that have been experiencing homelessness. And in addition, until last committee, there had been nine million dollars, actually nine point eight million dollars for additional sheltering through either supplemental actions from the council or eight hundred thousand dollars that was provided for self-managed encampments that had not been expended. I believe now, just in the last week or so, Just Care and the Public Defender Association has been contracted with to spend a portion of that, probably around five and a half million, but I don't actually have that contract number. But there is still, so obviously, there's still a substantial amount there. And then if you think about the American Rescue Plan or the Seattle Rescue Plan funding that's been provided, that's about forty-five million dollars. And while some acquisition is underway, so I can't necessarily speak to the amount of housing, for example, that's being acquired, you're hearing about progress being, moving there. Overall, none of the shelter beds or, for example, like the Safe Lot Program, none of those programs are currently operational. Though I want to also recognize that those were only passed about a little bit more than a month ago now. So there's a lot of processes that could be underway with the ARPA or the Seattle Rescue Plan funds. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Can I say something about this? Because we were really delighted.
Sharon, just one moment, sorry. First, I want to make sure, Councilmember Muscata, did Jeff answer the questions you were seeking clarification on?
Yes, and I'm sorry, Sharon, to interrupt you as well. I do appreciate that answer, Jeff, and I think that my interest is making sure that every dollar that the council has allocated is actually getting out the door in 2021. I think I, like everyone on this council, like every one of the human service providers, like every resident and constituent that we hear from, we all understand that our community members who are living unhoused want to be in a better place. They need to be in places that are safer than living out in the elements. We all walk around the city and we see the same thing. We need to be putting politics aside and putting those dollars to use and making sure that folks have a safe place to live. And so my real emphasis is trying to make sure that the dollars are not sitting there waiting for you know, reinvention of best practices that we've already deployed here in the city. And I look forward to making sure that all of those dollars are put out there. And I will just, maybe, Mr. Chair, since my mic is on, ask my second question and then would love to hear more from Sharon as well if you had other thoughts on that first one.
Well, Councilmember Muscata, is it a change in subject?
I'll hold it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah, if it's a change in subject, let's let, because I think Sharon has something germane to the, to Jeff's statement here. So Sharon, why don't you go ahead and then we'll do Councilmember Muscata's next question.
Well, thank you. Sorry about that, but I think we were really thrilled with the council in November voting for three additional tiny house villages. And then, of course, the ARPA budget and Frank Chop set aside the two million for tiny homes as a earmark. We were also very excited about that. And we were told right away earlier this year that there would be an RFP to identify the three new villages, right? And then all of a sudden, everything came to a grinding halt. And so even though we're staffed up and we are working with other providers that are interested in running the tiny house villages or providing services, we don't have an opportunity to apply for the RFP or none of us have the opportunity to apply for the RFP because it just, they told us there would be an RFP and it has not been released. And my sense, I don't want to be, you know, fatalistic, but my sense is that maybe because, you know, you know, we think the mayor's office is supportive, but we don't think that human service staff wants to do it. So they're just dragging it out, dragging it out. And then when I wrote Tiffany Washington, could you please ask, you know, what's going on with the RFP? She said, well, you know, I got to talk to Mark Dones. I mean, it's like, it's almost like in limbo land, like everything is, like, what was promised isn't happening. And I feel really bad because we were hoping to stand up these three new villages before winter, especially since council has, you know, appropriated the funds. And so I think there's some bureaucratic glitch happening where people are sort of shifting like, you know, isn't HSD still in charge until next year? Next year is when the contracts move over. So why aren't we having HSD go ahead? If HSD doesn't want to go ahead, then why isn't the authority going ahead? If the homeless authority doesn't want to go ahead, then we should make some other provision because the council did allocate those funds. So I think we need some help here because we're in this bureaucratic logjam, so.
Yeah, and Sharon, I do appreciate those comments. As I said in briefing this week, we have received a commitment from the executive to submit RFQs and do the pre-development work on those villages. We can definitely talk more offline about that and connect with folks from the executive branch on it. But I appreciate you raising some of those comments that, you know, that are somewhat related to the capacity issue, right? Like submitting the RFQs is essential to determine if there is capacity out there to respond to the RFQ. But in any event, thank you. Councilmember Muscata, your next question.
Thank you so much. I do want to say, I know that there are folks within HSD and HSI who've been really desperate to try to get information out, to get the contracts out. But I think that this goes upwards, this needs to fall upwards to management, to the mayor's office. And we need to have a joint understanding that the legislation that we pass and sign into law, these dollars are available, they need to get out now. So I do look forward to continuing to work with councilmembers here and the good chair to make sure that those dollars are getting stood up and that hopefully, as you said, that we can stand up these villages even later this year before winter comes. The second thing I wanted to say is I think it takes a lot of courage to be here. I've heard from some in the past that there was hesitation to speak out about some of the concerns or the process issues, maybe for fear of retaliation for your existing contracts. And I want to say thank you for sharing this information. I also, you know, I know that there has been some pressure over the last year to have a downward pressure on even the wages offered to some of your employees via the contracts that have been offered. And I wondered if folks might be willing to speak about some of the experiences that you had. For example, when the Seattle Center's shelter was closed and we were supposed to be opening up the additional hotel. I see Lauren smiling. There was a lot of downward pressure on how much the city was going to be willing to offer. We've heard this repeatedly from folks who came from Just Cares. And, you know, we understand that there was already an existing underpayment of these contracts. To then be in the midst of a pandemic when people's lives are literally at risk, both the providers and those who are living on shelter, and be told, we're not going to pay you more than X, really, I think, creates downward pressure and probably has contributed to this workforce shortage. And if anybody would be willing to elaborate a little bit more on that so we could weave together more of that narrative, because I've heard bits and pieces, I think that would be very illuminating so we can avoid that in the future.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Muscata. I'm happy to speak to that. So again, I'm Lauren from DESC. Much of what you said is, all of what you said is how we have experienced the situation and particularly with our loss of shelter bed capacity in the city. You know, we really were intending to do whatever we could do to maintain those those beds that we had at Exhibition Hall, not necessarily in that space, but wherever we could create the space to do so. We did not want to lose that shelter capacity. And it did feel like we didn't have the ability to really have that real conversation and negotiation with our partners at the city about what it would take to operationalize those units or those bed spaces elsewhere. And so it was disappointing, I think, you know. Things are stretched and our staff feel it on the ground, especially in our shelter settings. Exhibition Hall, for example, was still a congregate setting, though it was, you know, very well-distanced and we had, we had a wonderful team working there. It was an incredibly stressful place to be and we knew what it was going to take to be able to provide the right level of staffing. You know, the wages that we are contracted to pay. We are, you know, we are a union employer. And that we weren't able to have those negotiations and conversations to keep that capacity in our system at a time when we see so many of our neighbors living outdoors is really unfortunate. I think, yeah, we're just, we're very just disappointed that that opportunity has been lost. And I think we, at DESC in particular, remain incredibly concerned for our unsheltered folks that we're serving and the bed capacity that's available to them. You know, there are, there's a lot of great ideas and models out there for different ways that we can bring people indoors. But we know that some situations work better than others for our highly acute population of folks really struggling with complex behavioral health conditions. And for, in our experience, the enhanced shelter model, when there isn't enough housing, is kind of where we need to be. And in particularly enhanced to non-congregate settings in hotels, providing, you know, those round-the-clock wraparound services for folks. We've been really successful at that through this pandemic and like the opportunity to continue that.
Lauren, can I ask a follow-up question on that real quick? And, you know, I don't want to interrupt Councilwoman Muscata's line of questioning. So I mean, I'll hand it back over when I'm done with this, but I just want to drill into that a little bit more. So how many units was DESC operating at Exhibition Hall? Do you recall?
Yeah, I want to say it was one hundred or one thirty. I would need to double check, but I think it was a hundred.
So did, does DESC, or did DESC have the have the staffing available? I'm trying to think of the best way to phrase this, like.
Yes.
You intimated earlier that there might have been a way to solve for maintaining that capacity. My understanding is that capacity no longer exists, that the DESC is no longer operating those spaces. I guess my question is this, because we're repeatedly told the provider capacity is a big barrier here, right? Did DESC have the capacity to continue to operate those spaces? And if there was an RFQ, RFP, whatever, that was, that was kind of went out in the world today, would DESC have the ability to bid to try to bring that capacity back?
I think where the issue was is that we had capacity to have the staffing model that we had in that one singular location. But I think the idea had been to piecemeal it into a bunch of different locations, which means that we need more staff. And so with the current staffing makeup that we had to ensure proper, you know, round-the-clock coverage, it would have been possible if it was a, you know, a similarly sized program and just pick it up and pluck, you know, all those stuff over into the new location. But I don't believe that that opportunity had presented itself to us as an option. It was, it was more like, I think, we, and I think we also felt that because we've seen such success with really decongesting our shelter spaces, splitting it up is actually kind of preferred at this point. So it would have been the necessity to like replicate into two different teams instead of just one team. I'm not sure if that fully answers your question, but I can certainly dig more into these details with our housing director.
Well, I'm just trying to determine if there was and still is potentially capacity from DESC to expand these services.
Yeah, well, I think, I think at this point, all of those staff who had been operating that shelter have been absorbed into other programs and other vacancies within the organization. So we would be, I'm guessing, in the same, you know, in the situation that we're in currently where we would be needing to hire a fresh group of folks to come in and run something. Because we were very committed to making sure nobody was going to lose their employment as a result of that shelter not continuing.
Okay, well, I mean, it sounds like we kind of missed an opportunity there as a city family, which is unfortunate given the character of the people that were on that caseload. You know, we're certainly folks that are in need of that kind of support. Can I also just ask real quickly here, in terms of moving forward with the next steps, like if you had to bring on a new team to kind of bid for a new opportunity like that? like if you had to bring on a new team to kind of bid for a new opportunity like that, is that sort of getting into talking about the vacancy backlog that you guys have and kind of the issues with hiring? So those issues would probably present if we had to scale up some new capacity, I would imagine?
Yeah, yes, I would imagine so. I mean, I do think we are, we have ideas for ways that some of these issues can be solved for. But of course, there are kind of longer-term solutions. It's not just like wage increases. It would also be, you know, our training capacity. I know other folks have mentioned that before. Particularly amongst our supervisor and managerial group. You know, we are, we're very big at hiring from within. So, you know, we are promoting folks left and right who are wonderful case managers, but need a lot of that kind of development and skill growth to be great supervisors and organizational leaders and that sort of thing. That's a huge area of struggle for us. So I do think, I think there's ways other than just wages that we could see some improvements, hopefully in the near future. But I agree with your assessment that we are, we're pretty tapped out in the labor market right now. And we've kind of pulled every lever we know how to pull in terms of, you know, advertising and all of that. Where we really, you know, I've been here 13 years. We really are a good employer. We have wonderful benefits, wonderful healthcare, all of that. And those traditional things that we leaned on, you know, six weeks of paid time off and all of that. It's just, it's no longer at a place where it's working anymore.
If I could jump in?
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
I think the pressure that's on us is that every dollar we would, we would need to raise salaries, you know, for the staff that are here is in conflict almost with a new dollar for us to address kind of the numbers of folks that are on our streets. It's kind of an unprecedented time. There's, there is new dollars and new energy about solving homelessness that some of us have advocated for 25 years for and been pushing for. Finally, there is some new dollars to invest in those and to get more folks off the street, to get more people into housing. At the same time, the programs that have been here are woefully underfunded. And so you're trying, the pressure is on both sides, and that's what's so difficult, I think. That's what makes it so difficult, because you're trying to take this unprecedented moment to respond in a more full way than you ever have been able to, probably, at the same time when you're kind of slowly bleeding staff during the pandemic for the programs and the folks that have been carrying you all through. And our folks, you know, many of those folks are tired. They're just tired, just like healthcare folks are. It's been a long, hard road. But so those two things are happening at the same time, which is really difficult, I think.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Muscat, did you have any final questions in your line there?
Just to say thank you. I agree, Councilmember Lewis. It does seem like a huge missed opportunity, especially when we know that the organizations represented here. I have had the chance to visit with so many of you, and I know that you serve the highest needs populations in many cases. You know, folks with complex behavioral health issues, often compounding health issues if there's a substance abuse involved, especially serving our youth with youth care. You all have experts that we need to be funding. And the last thing that we need to be doing as a city is applying any downward pressure and putting a cap on how much we should be offering you. When I heard that someone with a master's degree in chemical dependency was earning $33,000 as a starting wage, it's no wonder there's high turnover in this field. And then during a pandemic, to be told, "We're not going to allow you to open up an alternative to the Seattle Center site at this hotel unless you can get below this dollar amount", this is not the time for skimming. This is not the time for pushing pressure down, especially on those who we're relying on to help allow people to survive during this moment. And I know that going from, you know, over 500 beds, for example, at DESC to now just around 98 beds, 96 beds, actually, that's a huge loss in beds at the very moment that we needed. And yes, that number's going to be climbing up, thank goodness, towards over 300 by the end of the year. But that's still a 35%, 40% reduction in the number of beds at the very moment that we needed it. So missed opportunity, and I'm only hopeful that we can continue to push those dollars that we've allocated out the door, put those politics aside, and make sure that we're actually funding those who are caring for our most vulnerable, and we'll keep working with you on that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Muscat, for those comments. I mean, this is an emergency, and we need to be deploying our resources to reflect the emergency that we see on the street. So questions from other colleagues on the committee? Councilmember Mraz.
Thank you. I might be shifting gears a little bit here, but I wanted to talk about the Just Care program. You know, in Pioneer Square, in Councilmember Lewis's district, and in the CID and mine, we saw that program achieve really important success through really targeted outreach, through targeted, you know, relationships and connecting people, getting folks off the street and into non-congregate shelter. And, you know, and including all of the really intensive case management that goes along with that and help people get into more stable, long-term housing. So I think we are trying to figure out how to scale that up too, and would love to hear, setting aside budget for a second, which I know is a huge issue as we've been discussing right now. You know, do you think that scaling something like that up for citywide use is possible? And, you know, what kind of tweaks would we have to make to that model? Or how could we make something like that work so that we have additional opportunities there?
Who wants to take that one on? It's a shame we don't have a Reach panelist. But Derek, Derek has definitely been. Hand it over to Derek.
Thank you. I have some experience working with Just Care. And I said earlier, it really worked out well, but there was some issues we probably could have worked out better. The one thing for our native community, the couple of things that didn't work out well is targeted locations, encampment areas, where our community don't tend to really camp large numbers within those kind of encampment areas. And specific neighborhoods as well didn't work. We, I think, I don't know if everybody's aware, we had to tweak the Just Care thing just to make sure, because we already committed and had the Wallenford Inn Hotel that was going to be, they had like 17 rooms for native folks that were found with the Just Care outreach. And they weren't finding any here in Pioneer Square. So we had actually found them over there off of Denny, Denny Park, I think. We found, but anyways, we had to expand it. So any kind of targeted geographical area is not good for our community at all. For that reason, a lot of our most chronic tend to camp alone and not in large encampments. So that's one area of focus that didn't work well. And then, yeah, I think that was really the big one. Just long, so it really worked well as far as actually having the resources. They seem to have an abundance of resources to actually do some intensive work, like what I was saying before about what's going on with Kings End and why we're failing there. It's that merger between the rapid rehousing. So it's like we were housing people just temporarily in a shelter and trying to just force them out the door into rapid housing program. What we need is a spot to actually do some intensive work, work on the mental health, work on the substance, get them on, you know, a mat, all the different things. And we need that opportunity. So that really worked well, but I don't know how you, you know, that's really costly. But, yeah, I think what would work better for the native community is actually be able to do our own outreach and have our own hotel like we did. Like that was one thing that worked well with PDA. The Wallenford Inn was kind of handed over to us, but it was on a small scale. We would like to have something like that in a large scale, a real hotel that's not like a Kings End for the rapid rehousing opponent. And also, one more thing that's not working well with Kings End is having a third-party manager, a third-party owner involved. I mean, the owner's kind of involved in the mix. That's not working well. Well, there seems to be some tension there. There's a little bit over walking on eggshells about the owner on site all the time, worrying about property, all that kind of stuff. It's kind of an issue. So anyways, that's another piece I would suggest.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I do want to note that, you know, when this council created the HOPE program during last budget, the intent was that providers would be the ones determining the populations who were in greatest need and what strategies for outreach should be used. And so I know we did hear lots of frustration from folks who were doing intensive outreach to encampments and then, you know, having some of our departments identify different priorities for different reasons. So really hoping that we can get back to the original intent of that legislation. So thank you, Derek, for that information.
Can I add something to this discussion? And part of it is that Derek talked about the Kings End. And Lehigh has 163 people, many of them who were in, you know, in encampments who were swept. And we have to move everybody out by February. Derek and Lehigh, you know, Chief Seattle and Lehigh, we have to move everybody. That's like over 200 homeless people out because the lease terminates end of February. And right now, initially, the Human Service Department said the pathway out was going to be rapid rehousing. And that is not turning out to be the right way to go for various reasons. And then the other way out was going to be permanent supportive housing. But we have not found a pathway where coordinated entry, where King County and the Human Service Department are going to let us, you know, in February, end of February, move 200-some people into permanent supportive housing through coordinated entry. So we are really concerned about this. And that's part of the problem with leasing hotels, that the hotel owners are getting basically market rate, market rents for their hotel rooms. And then at the end of the, you know, the term, right, you still have homeless people with nowhere to go. So we're very concerned about this deadline coming up of February. And so we really need a way, you know, I'm going to work with Derek, we'll work with Chief Seattle to come up, because we're in the same boat, right? February, everybody has to leave. And right now, the rapid rehousing did not work, and access to coordinated entry does not work. So we are, you know, in big trouble.
Thank you for sharing that, Sharon. Here, I want to move on to Councilmember Herbald, who's been patiently waiting with a question. And then I have one that might be sort of a closing question, but I won't cut it short if committee members want to get a few more in. So Councilmember Herbald.
Thanks. I was going to move to a different topic, but Sharon just said something that made me want to, for the viewing public's benefit, just make sure that we have clarification. The issue, Sharon, as I understand it, with permanent supportive housing that might come online near the time when the lease is up and coordinated entry is that your folks that are in the hotels will not be prioritized through coordinated entry to access those units. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's the problem we need to solve for. Thank you. The other, not a new issue, also an issue that you brought up earlier, Sharon, is I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about increased behavioral health needs. This is something that I'm very concerned about. You raised it, Sharon, in your opening remarks. You know, I think everybody's heard me talk about the shadow pandemic. It's usually used to refer to increased domestic violence, but it is really across a number of different behavioral health needs. It could be elder abuse, it can be gun violence, it can be substance abuse disorder. But everybody, I think, agrees that in the wake of the pandemic, we are seeing increased suicides. We are seeing across a number of different activities really stark increase in help that people, that people need. And just wondering if you could take a moment to talk a little bit more to that. Appreciate your reference to wanting to have more staff on site. But, and that's really important. I don't want to diminish that as a, as a sort of a community safety element. But I think figuring out ways to get to some of the underlying issues of folks who are in need is really, really important for us to grapple with. Thanks.
Thanks. Teresa, would you like to discuss the behavioral health services we have?
Very much so. First, I would just like to highlight that the problem, you mentioned DV and then expanded that. And what I can tell you from reading the incident reports and being one of the key people responding to the seriousness of what is happening in the villages, we are seeing a huge uptick in intensity of the, of sort of the episodes. You know, we didn't talk so much before about guns and people didn't. The threats are much more graphic and intense. And it's getting sort of more difficult to determine who is, who is making just sort of an idle threat to get attention and who is actually making a threat. Now that said, our social services team is, they, as well as our organizers and our SPMs on site, you know, get very strong support. I will tell you this, we have a solid infrastructure of managers and supportive people supporting every single team on the ground. And the training, like I said, we've really stretched the dollars so that, so that the training goes beyond even, even just sort of the regular things we've always trained in. Today, we are training in more in mental illness, more in a drug and alcohol dependency. We're, we're working extra hard with our team to ensure that they are maintaining an attitude of helpfulness, that the importance of being extra kind, preserving dignity. And I know those are, those are the basics, and we would all expect that. But, but the patience required of our teams, because we do not have the extra support of a second organizer on, that the patience, the level-headedness, the, all of those things that we're asking are greater today than I've ever seen. And I have literally been working with the chronically homeless community for the last 12 years. And so, you know, any, any help the city could give in, in funding, not only for the positions for, that we could pay for people with more experience, that we could recognize the burnout. I do not know why Lehigh has been so fortunate. I want to guess that it's because the organizers feel more, feel supported. That's not to say more than any other organization, but it is to say that we talk a lot about, we talk a lot about love. We talk a lot about compassion. We listen carefully when they talk about burnout. We work with everybody to make sure that they're getting appropriate, you know, appropriate time away, that they can have a mental health day when something big has occurred. We're seeing, you know, we're seeing more intensity in our harm reduction villages, specifically around, you know, things where 911 is called and somebody's in medical crisis that, that I can tell you, you know, for our organizers is intense. Shoot, it's intense for any of us to see someone in medical distress, to see someone who's OD'd, you know, and, and all the things that our teams bear witness to, and this is true for all of us. I'm happy to hear that we're, we're thinking now about the impact COVID has had. We have not been able to just exit people for near, you know, for almost the line of going too far. It's today only when they truly are an imminent threat, and we're clear that they're an imminent threat. But though, but that line gets blurred and, and it's hard to know sometimes when someone's making a threat, whether that's really, and they're graphic, is that mental illness coming into play? Is that, are they, you know, very intoxicated in this moment? And we, you know, we, in our training, I'll just show you really quick, we share 30 scenarios. Every single team does a one-day training. In that training, in the part about de-escalation and boundaries, we share literally 30 of the most extreme scenarios that happened in our villages. And then we put it out there for different, we break them into groups and each group has to sort of decide how are they going to handle that. That is so that they walk. That is so that they walked out of that day feeling a little more empowered, a little steadier in their, in their shoes, in their position. And, and as I said, we're, we're stretching those training dollars as far as we can. But, but truly, if, you know, it, it is time to recognize COVID has burned our people out, and all of us, everyone here. And it's, and it's tried the patience of our villagers, our shelter stayers, and our staff in a new way that, that, you know, we couldn't have seen. And yet, we, you know, we, we do our very, very best to ensure that everyone is feeling supported, that we do have the capacity to deal with burnout, deal with trauma. We, we work from a trauma and form care approach, not only with staff, but with our clients. And, and that is what we're seeing, a definite uptick.
I do want to add something, which is very interesting, is that, you know, we've also had many villages that started out as self-managed. You know, it started with tent cities and then self-management, and then it's evolved. Some of them have evolved over time. And we, to Lehigh's credit, I think, to Teresa's credit, we've hired over 40 people who have been living in a village on staff. So we've taken people who have been homeless and trained them, and we have over 40 formerly homeless people serving as staff. 10 of them have been promoted to higher positions, including management positions. Half the people are people of color. And so we're very, very proud of the fact that we do have this, you know, promotional opportunity, employment opportunity for homeless, you know, formerly homeless people, formerly, you know, clients of ours.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Herbold, did you have a follow-up? Okay, I, I do want to maybe sort of move toward some bottom-line questions here and then open it up if anyone has closing questions. But I do just want to ask, and then unfortunately, we don't still have Derek and Bill here with us. And I think that DeGale also had to leave. But I do want to ask a bottom line on what are the hurdles as organizations that currently give you pause in applying for RFQs? And what can we do as a council in constructing policy in the fall going forward to incentivize and respond to those concerns so that we can scale capacity together and be a good partner as a city in scaling up a lot of these assets? Because, you know, frankly, it's not for a lack of resources. The council has appropriated a considerable amount of money for shelter this year. A lot of it is currently unrealized. And, you know, it can only happen if we can put together attractive RFQs that people will bid on. So to open it up here to anyone who wants to jump on that first, like, feedback would be appreciated. So we can duly respond and craft policy accordingly.
So one of the things I'm thinking of right off the top of my head, because I don't write the grants. We do have a grant writer, is that if you received XYZ grant, you will, that, that should give you some extra points for being able to apply for the grant that you're speaking about. So that would help some in, in getting us, helping us write them just a little bit faster.
I think one thing that the city could do, because you could, as, just like on Monday, you signed a lease with Sound Transit for a new village site. The city also owns land that could be quickly used for tiny house villages, whether it's Seattle City Light or SPU or S Thought Property. So I think the city has resources, instead of like, let's say, leasing it from somebody or a private owner. The city does have land currently. Sound Transit is leasing the land to the city for nothing. But we have city property that could quickly be converted into tiny house villages, for one. The other thing that is that it's been, when you contract, we're hoping that the contract goes better when it gets moved over to the regional authority. Partly is that there is so much documentation. And I hate to like say this, but because the city is getting requests for Freedom of Information Act, information, we have to document everything. So if we give a client a sandwich, right? Or we buy them, you know, some work boots, right? We actually have to fill out, our case manager has to fill out a form that says, this person has, has a sandwich, and, or this person has work boots, and put their HMIS number, their identifying number on that. So can you imagine if you are a social worker or a case manager and you're working with, you know, a caseload? And every time you help somebody, you have to go through this craziness of filling out, you know, like, audits, audits. So our finance department and I think our case managers are overburdened with reporting requirements. So we're hoping that that can ease up. And so that would be something we would hope could happen. But that's why sometimes it's been, like, before you contract with the city, you know, it, it should be, it should be more user-friendly and more efficient. So I don't know if other people feel that way about city contracts.
Lauren?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that, Sharon. I think one, one key thing to keep in mind is, you know, partnership. It takes collaboration and respect. And we need the city to engage with providers on the specialty types of services that they provide. You know, we have a really high acuity group. We're very well-versed in working with folks with multiple complex challenges. But sometimes it does feel like we are asked to, you know, fit a different description or do something other than what we are really good at and experts at. And so I really feel like, you know, engaging with providers in more interactive and collaborative discussions around what it's going to take to add this capacity to our system, it would yield really creative ideas and just overall better results for our community. We, we really do want to, to do this work and to continue doing this work in partnership.
So Lauren, can, can you maybe, because I think that's a really good point. Can you provide maybe a little bit more of an example of what that engagement would look like? You use the term engagement on specialty services. Like, what form would that engagement take?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I don't have a ton of ideas off the top of my head, but I would say for certain, maybe even prior to the RFP process, you know, some engagement around what kind of enhanced, enhanced shelter capacity we might be able to offer, or ideas for optimal programming for the folks that we are serving with those really high and intense behavioral health care needs. You know, looping back to something some of our friends were talking about with, with Just Care. You know, I'm really seeing that that model is working great in a lot of cases for many people. But I think one of the challenge areas has been, it's almost like, in some cases, like a scattered site shelter approach. And a lot of the folks that we are serving really truly need that 24/7 support. Like, somebody to, you know, remind them that, oh, hey, it's nine o'clock, it's time for those bed med, bedtime meds. You know, like those sorts of things, or here's a meal that we prepared for you, and all of that. And so I feel like that's one, one of the pieces that, that has been missing in, in these conversations around some of the newer, like, outreach models and things that have been coming to bear. And then with that too, you know, I think, I know there, there is a lot of resource going towards the Just Care model. And that, again, fabulous, but I think our challenge is we have 839 existing positions that were created well before these new models that we just can't leave behind. And so I just wanted to highlight, kind of looping back to this whole conversation around wages and growth and inflation and all of that. Like, I do see a better horizon for the way that we are thinking about structuring programs moving forward in the community. But we have to backtrack and really think about all of the positions that actually currently exist today that aren't going to be able to tap into those new and existing resources.
All right. Thank you for expanding on those points a little bit more. Any other responses to, to my, my initial question about incentivizing bids on RFQs? Okay, and, and then out there, you know, for, for Bill and Derek, if you guys are watching, feel free to call anytime and, and respond to that question one-on-one with me. Okay, and for that matter, our partners at Evergreen Treatment Services and, and other providers who can join today. Okay, are there any final questions from, or, or statements from committee members before we wrap in the committee today? Okay, well, with that, I think I'm going to go ahead and, and excuse the panel. Thank you so much for being generous with your time this afternoon. Moving on to, to statements for good of the order. I don't have any closing statements for good of the order. It doesn't look like anybody else does. Appreciate folks accommodating this meeting before we go off on recess. Definitely a lot of good points that were raised here to give us a little bit of guidance in how we prepare to structure our budget in the fall and structure our ongoing conversations about getting currently appropriated money for 2021 out the door. So I look forward to continuing those discussions with council colleagues, executive partners, and all of the providers present today. Everybody have a good Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.